Okay, let's call the City of Milton Common Council meeting to order on Tuesday, June 18th, 2019 at 6:05 PM. And then, can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
The meeting was published at Dave's Ace, Milton Biggle Wiggly in Milton City Hall.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, we have an agenda. Okay, pledge of allegiance. Item number four is public comments regarding items which can be affected by city council. If you can limit your comments to five minutes, that would be appreciated. And we do have three people signed up to speak. And the first one I have on the list is David Samuelson. And if you can please come up to the podium and give your first and last name and your address if you would like to speak.
David Samuelson, 52 Windsor Court, Milton, Wisconsin.
Okay, go ahead.
So what I would like to discuss is the project on Windsor Court, the new road going in. My concern is the lack of storm sewer. And what is happening is the water comes off of Madison Avenue down Windsor Court to my property, which is a lowland area. No storm sewer means that the easement road that my neighbors have to traverse is eroding. The water is flooding my pole barn there and it's causing a significant ice hazard in the wintertime because the water has nowhere to go, backs up onto the road, which leaves several inches of ice on the water, on the road, I'm sorry. Now that we are tearing the road up, it's all gonna be new, I think now would be the time to add storm sewers. They were supposed to be there in 1961, at least that's what the engineer thinks is there, but there is nothing there. I own three properties on Windsor Court and I'm paying a fee for water to be dealt with. And all that's happening is the water comes on my property and the back of my land is where the city water goes and is essentially a city water holding area. So I am paying multiple fees and getting no benefit other than a water holding area that's ruining my property and my easement road. And I was quoted a bid of $72,000 to fix the problem, of which I am responsible 100% for, according to L.
Is there anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay, all right, thanks. The next person we have listed is, and I hope I pronounce this correct, if I don't, I apologize ahead of time, Pat Drug and Tia Burry, is that correct?
Yeah.
And so first and last names and your address.
Pat Drug, 100 Merchant Row, Milton, that's the scoreboard bar. And my home address is 838 North Withering Hills Drive, Janesville, Wisconsin.
Mine is 111 West High Street, Milton, Wisconsin.
And your first and last name for the...
Tia Burry.
Okay, thank you.
And we were here to get involved in the discussion about the road, also the road Windsor. There was some discussion about how the parking lot would be affected and we had some concerns if there was some loss of parking down by Windsor Road. Already on Friday and Saturday nights, it's overwhelming, the parking, there's hardly left, there's hardly any left because of the restaurants and so forth, fish fries and so on. The parking is hard to come by on the other end of Merchant Row for the scoreboard and other bars, Club Bub. I'm not speaking for them, but I know they would probably have the same concerns. So we're wondering how that's being addressed, how much parking are we gonna lose? So that's our biggest question.
Okay, thank you. The next person we have signed up is Donald Axelson, is that correct?
Correct.
So first and last name and address.
Donald Axelson, 40 Windsor Court. I'm Dave's neighbor. And when the spring comes, the water runs. I get the water from the cemetery and from all the houses up on Madison. They come down across, down into the end of my driveway or in the corner of my driveway. So I've had to pay out well over $3,000 just to get some of the drainage out of there. And the problem we're having without the drainage there is it's ice. I fell last year. Luckily, I'm old, so it doesn't matter too much, but you know, it could be real bad. We've had two vehicles slide out of control right on that corner trying to use our road. One could get itself out and the other one had to go with a tractor and blow him out. It isn't a very deep ditch, but it's solid ice. We can have two, three inches ice on there. I have already put hundreds of pounds of road salt on there just to keep that corner halfway free. So I'm hoping you people can do something to help us out. It is a terrible water problem there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Item number five is the mayoral proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month, July 2019. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the City of Milton recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, I, Anisa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim July 2019 as Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Milton, and I urge all citizens to celebrate by playing at or strolling through one of our many parks in the city. And it will be signed the 18th day of June 2019. Item number six, approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number seven, discussion and action to approve renewal alcohol licenses 2019 to 2020 year.
The memo was included by City Clerk Leanne Schrader recommending approval for the renewal of the 2019-2020 alcohol licenses as outlined in the memo for Class A and Class B establishments.
There's a motion and a second, is there any questions or discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries and the approvals are made. Number eight, discussion and action to approve new and renewal operator licenses for 2019-2020.
Similar situation, City Clerk Leanne Schrader has provided a memo with the new and renewal operator licenses, in this case, so these are the individuals that are serving and selling, as outlined in the memo.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Discussion and action to approve tobacco cigarette licenses for 2019 and 2020.
This is the last renewal item on the agenda. Again, I guess I probably should've said, but, kind of take meeting minutes and do this other... This is an annual process that we do for operators, sellers, and establishments. In this item, this is the tobacco and cigarette sellers licenses. So again, in this case, we are licensing the establishments. And there are no new changes from previous years, plural.
I would move approval. Second.
There's a motion and a second, any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding the acceptance of a bid for the Front Street and Windsor Court reconstruction projects.
So the item on the agenda tonight, and Mark Langer can certainly talk at greater length about the process if there are questions. There is a bid that was opened up on May 30th for the Windsor Court and Front Street reconstruction projects. One bid was received and it actually came in under what we expected. The individual entity is RT Fox, received a low bid, so on the agenda, this component of it is for the bid award itself. If the council still chooses, I mean, now might be an appropriate time to answer some of the questions that the individuals had during the public comment section, but that's up to you.
I would appreciate having a discussion of at least of all those questions.
Okay.
To make sure that at least there's some thought process of that happening and addressing.
And then also, I think if we could have Howie and Mark add additional comments as necessary, that would be great.
Sure.
So thank you, Mark Langer, for jumping in there.
So Windsor Court project is Part B, as stated in the memo, the total bid amounts are listed. Part A is Front Street. The projects involve on Front Street sanitary sewer replacement, water main replacement, some storm sewer improvements, and then roadway reconstruction. It also includes the connection between Front Street and the parking lot, which is some of the parking concerns that were brought up tonight, affecting the parking stalls, the number of parking stalls.
But what is that number, Mark? I've been saying four to six.
I haven't counted, I think it's about six though. I mean, we could certainly count to get an exact, but it's certainly less than has been added over the course of the last few years, substantially less. Part B Windsor Court is basically a water main replacement being done to bring that water main up to current code. It's a smaller water main than what is currently allowed by code, so DNR has recommendations to perform those improvements as funds allow and, you know, the projects can be completed. That project is not a reconstruction, it's a little bit less intensive. It'll be curb and gutter repair, some sidewalk repair, and then pavement replacement. So it won't be quite as involved as Front Street, but that's the scope of that project.
Mark, is that mean size driven by demand in, from that main?
That main, DNR requires a minimum of six inch, all the records that we have indicated is a two inch.
Okay, so it's more of a size?
Yes, just...
Capacity?
It is a capacity issue for fire protection.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, you keep going, nobody else is jumping in yet.
Is there, some of what's discussed about, is there any way to address some of that in this process or...
The storm, the stormwater?
As in a separate issue entirely?
Um...
I mean, I'm just curious.
So, you know, I'm an engineer, we can solve problems, right? But, you know, it is private property, private easement, as was pointed out. The water, I mean, it's clear, it drains from the high spot to the low spot, but again, it's conservancy, you know, it was originally designed and built in 1961, I wasn't even born. So, I don't, I don't know what the, you know, who, you know, who's responsible for what piece, I guess. If it was a new development, it would be, it would be different. There'd be different responsibilities for the stormwater. Or if we were substantially changing the roadway, but like I said, it's a rehabilitation project, it's not a reconstruction where we're widening the road, we're adding impervious surface. So that's not taking place, so there's no new stormwater requirements that the city would have to meet per the DNR.
Oh, okay, that was my question, is if we were in compliance with all DNR requirements?
Yes, we are.
And the same with our drainage, with these, with what you're planning on doing here on Windsor?
We're not changing the drainage.
Okay.
So that's why, you know, that's why there's, there's no compliance issues, we're not making the change to it.
Is there any other questions or comments?
The $72,000 figure that was mentioned, that was based on, kind of taking a look at...
Yeah, we had a public information meeting, and some of these concerns are brought up by the residents here tonight.
Yep.
And they kind of requested us to look into an option of installing a pipe to convey the water underground, to get it from the surface to underground, to convey it to where it goes, rather than the overland drainage route that it takes now. You know, we took a look at it and that's how that was developed.
So if we added that, then typically, if I understand how we do assessments for projects, we would take $72,000 and divide it by the residents on that street?
Aye.
Howie, is that how it would go?
It's, assessments go per property. So, and there's no street back there, it's a private driveway, so, yeah.
How many other areas around this street are affected with this retention area?
How many areas drain to this area?
Uh huh. How far out does it go?
I would have to look at topographic maps to be for sure, but certainly, like was pointed out, some of Madison Avenue, Windsor Court, some of the area behind the fire station, the old Public Works building, it probably goes there. Some of the cemetery maybe, but I'd have to look at maps to get real specific, you know.
Okay. I don't, I don't think I know what it means for its conservancy, like, that's not a zoning thing, right? So what does that mean when a property is designated conservancy? Is that the term we used?
Yeah, conservancy is a zoning, and it's a lowland conservancy, and those are zoned that way because they're the natural low area and that's where the water goes naturally. So it's zoned that way so that it doesn't get filled in and developed.
So was it zoned that way and then some, a house was built anyways because it was zoned that way, or, I don't, I don't understand?
The houses that, that they have aren't in the conservancy, they're on the outside edges of it, or they're on their property but not in the conservancy. The conservancy is, it's just a designation where all the, a zoned area where the water goes, to the lower area. But, no, but their buildings aren't in the conservancy, but the conservancy's on their property, so...
I took a look at the map and the conservancy kind of looks like an island in the middle of the property, so that the portion that is actually the conservancy is just a portion.
So probably when they were built, it wasn't raining the way it's raining, or it's been raining, or they didn't think it would be an issue when they built houses next to the conservancy, or we just don't know?
I don't know, I mean, maybe there was future planned developments or something else down the road that didn't happen, or, I don't know, you know, if it was 1961, we don't have a lot of records. That was before the city and the village merged, so that was in...
So it's really junctions, Milton Junctions issue? [laughing].
When, when there's an assessment like this, how long are the property owners given to be able to, you know, pay back that assessment?
So if I understand correctly, because this is private property, we can't assess for this? So we...
You can do a developers agreement. Is that, I don't know, Mark would know more, but, but it'd be similar to a developers agreement.
Mark is thinking.
Is there any time that you think in like the next 10 years, when maybe this road might be widened, where there would be a little more done with the drainage?
Windsor Court?
Yeah.
I would doubt it. I mean, if the water main wasn't...
And this is part of the driveway that is having the issue, it's not Windsor Court itself. Irregardless of that, it's still going to be a problem whether or not Windsor Court ever is widened.
You need more time to think. Next question?
Well, there are, there are options, but they would all involve the property owners paying on some determined basis towards the cost for the storm water remediation, unless the city decides that it's going to allocate it out of its general budget, I So that could conceivably be in the nature of a special charge. The disadvantage of that is you can't do installment payments on a special charge. Perhaps a special assessment, we need to look into that, but in conjunction, as indicated, because it's on private property, the city can't do anything without agreements with all of the property owners, including easements to install and maintain. So it's a bit, it would be quite, it's, be very involved, and as any, it's very similar to, would be a very similar situation to a development agreement with a developer, really.
Ultimately, it would be an easement in order to make that happen, is that correct? On that property, Mark, in my understanding?
We would need an easement to perform the work, but not necessarily an easement for the installation, or to own the utility. Utilities, as far as I understand, would be owned by the private property owner.
Yes, I guess that'll be up to the option of the city as to...
Sure, sure.
Whether it wants a permanent easement for maintenance, for example, or not, or leave it up to the...
Sure.
People, there are advantages of that and disadvantages of, of that, because I'm sure the city can see what happens when facilities are not maintained, so that's, that's another situat, but it's a, so as you can see, it's a bit involved, there's a lot of moving pieces that are involved.
And ultimately, all of the property owners would have to agree to pay some portion of the $72,000?
I...
If we did it that way?
I would, I would say that this, I would recommend that to the city, that it not enter into an agreement until there's an agreement by all affected property owners to contribute to the cost.
We discussed earlier the outlying area that was brought up. That's my question, I mean, we have other parts of the community that are draining towards that property, correct?
Yeah, that, we don't really have sufficient information to, to answer at this time, what properties would or would not be appropriate to include in, in this.
Question if I can, is water in that area all the time now? That we were talking about, on your property? Or not?
I can answer that, it's, whenever it rains, there's standing water.
Okay, gotcha.
And just to clarify, there's not the whole property owners, it affects, it's just me?
Okay.
Through the, all of the area we're talking...
Mark, all of the property owners would have to be notified and they would all be affected with this scenario that you just gave us, correct?
Well, one step would be determine who all the property owners are. We don't know that yet. There's some indication it'd be one, from what I've heard, it may be more than one, so there's, there's a lot of unknowns right now. So when it's finally determined who all has property affected by the public work that would be proposed to be constructed, then you can make, then you can make, determine as to who everyone is that would need to be notified.
Counsel, is, is the assessment predicated on property value if there were an individual assessment, or is everybody...
This type of assessment is, it's based on just what it costs to be put in?
No, what I'm saying, the, the individual contribution for each property owner, is it predicated on...
Go up to the, I have to ask you to go up to the podium because we can't hear you on the recording.
I think it's our...
I appreciate that, thanks.
I'll be quiet.
And you have to say your first and last name and address again.
This is Pat Drug, scoreboard bar and grill. I was wondering if the, when you do an assessment for the property owners, is the individual assessments predicated on the value of the properties, or is everybody assessed equally? If it's $72,000 and there's 20 property owners, is it divided by 20, or do you go by the individual property value?
There are various means of assessing or special charging property for the cost of a, of a public work. And, but in my experience, a value of the property is not normally one of them, it has to be some rational basis related to the value provided to the property. So, and I've not seen it yet, where just because a property, property A is worth more than property B, that it's going to be assessed more.
Sure.
There are various factors that go into it.
Okay.
But as I say, I can't tell you now what that would be.
I have one last question, if I may. Has it ever been considered, I didn't know the number of parking areas that would be lost. Six, you mentioned, approximately. Like in front of our bar, the scoreboard, on the corner of Crandall and Merchant Row, there's, I park in the yellow part there all the time, we never have trucks load and unload there, they usually, they come to the back, or if they're big trucks, they have to stay in the center of the road, and that's the way it is generally for the, for all the merchants there, the vendors don't use that. Could we pick up some parking spaces if there's similar circumstances? I'm pretty sure on the corner on Crandall, there's one parking space available that's yellow now, and there's no parking, there's no fire hydrant, and on, maybe there's some opportunity to pick up some parking spaces in the existing area, if we really looked at it. That's all. Thank you for your time.
Yep, thanks.
Mark, I was just wondering, the estimate that you had given to do this work for Samuelson's and the $72,000, is that, can this work be done after we do these other projects, or does this have to be a part of the Front Street Windsor Court project that we're working on now?
It can be done independent of the project.
And we're not going to be tearing anything extra up or anything?
Very minimal, it's, because it's all at the end of the road, and the very end of Windsor Court is actually private property.
Okay.
Again, so it's all kind of, from that private property point, it'd be back 10, 20 feet onto Windsor Court, so it'd be very minimal costs.
All right.
That would be redone or repaid twice.
Am I right that the only reason that we're talking about the $72,000 is that there is in... is that there is in the bid, the opportunity to extend the work and do a limited amount of work beyond that?
That is not part of the bid. That would have to be added after the award through change order.
But the award allows for that add-on?
Yes, yes.
That's kind of why we're talking about it now? Is that it's a, it's an add-on that could be allowed?
Yes.
But it's not really necessary. It's not, there's no interconnection between what we're talking about doing here and the stormwater piece.
That's correct. It would be added through a change order to the project after the award if it was chose to go forward with the storm sewer improvements through the private property.
We would have to get all the homeowners to agree to pay more before we could add it on?
Or just the one?
Or just the one. It doesn't sound like he probably wants to pay $72,000.
The point that I was making though is that we've really got two separate issues here and we really could address them as two separate issues. And we could address the bid and the award of bid as it is right now and move forward with that. And then work with the homeowners to figure out whether or not there's some way of mitigating the problem that exists.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we go ahead and do that?
Would you like to make that motion, Bill?
Sure. I would move the award of the bid for Front Street and Windsor Court reconstruction projects.
There's a motion and a second. Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
So now can we look at the scenario, possibilities between the property owners?
Not at this time.
Right, right. Not at this time, but now for city staff to take, to go ahead and look into this?
We could put it on another agenda.
Okay, great. But I'm not sure what you're asking city staff to do.
We have to put that on an agenda as an item and we can discuss with Linda what she would like the agenda item to read. Okay, we're on 11, right? Discussion and possible action regarding a work order for engineering work related to the Front Street and Windsor Court reconstruction projects.
Similar project or same project, the engineering work order is the work order that Baxter and Woodman requires in order for us to, in order for them to perform engineering and site overview for this project once it commences and is completed. So there is a work order here with Baxter and Woodman with a total not to exceed $65,000. And this includes both Front Street and Windsor Court.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number 12, discussion and possible action regarding ordinance number 463, rezoning a property along North Janesville Street from R4 to R3.
So this is a request by Bonson Construction, who recently purchased land along North Janesville Street. Recently purchased 15 acres of land. A portion of that property is zoned R4 and another portion of that property is zoned R3. There's a 9.1 acre parcel that's R4 and a 5.6 acre parcel that's R3. The request is to rezone the R4 portion of that to R3 in order to create uniformity within the entire 15-plus acre land holdings. So then, when the property is subdivided, as is the owner and developer's intent, the property will be subdivided with like zoning throughout. In the event that the rezoning does not occur, it would likely change the land owner's subdivision plans in this, in what I mean when I say that is how they would subdivide the land. Again, because it is not appropriate to have a parcel that has multiple zoning classifications within itself. The idea is that by rezoning from R4 to R3, the entire 15 acres will have an R3 zoning classification and that is no longer an issue. The R3 zoning classification is a down zoning from the R4 current zoning classification. And what I mean when I say that is the R3 is a less intensive zoning classification. For example, in the R4 zoning classification, apartment complexes are allowed, whereas in the R3 they are not. The owner has expressed his intent to develop the site with single and two-family homes. However, we don't have a residential subdivision plan at this time, which is not uncommon or out of sequence. It's just that's the process is that he has requested is to rezone the property first so he knows where those lot lines would be in the event that either A, it is approved or B, it is not approved. This went before the Plan Commission earlier this evening at 4 o'clock and their public meeting or public hearing was held. There was a substantial amount of comments from the public. Certainly Alderperson Lane and Mayor Welch were in attendance as members of the Plan Commission and can speak to that. Many concerns expressed about the type of development or the sequence of being a development, the timing of development, the validity of the need for the development and stormwater, I think were some of the major concerns. So there was substantive discussion about that. Ultimately, the Plan Commission voted unanimously to approve this rezoning, citing its compliance with comprehensive plan in which calls for this area to be developed with planned neighborhood uses, which would be appropriate for single and two-family development. I think, again, if Alderperson Lane or Mayor Welch wants to comment on any of the other public comments, but that was the ultimate decision of the Plan Commission was to forward a positive recommendation unanimously to the council for that rezoning. Did I get it all?
You did.
Larry, what'd you hear?
I think the takeaway was most important was this is only the first step in the process and we wanted to remind the residents that had come to speak that their input was valid. We also encouraged them to work directly with the property owner, developer, to, you know, address some of their concerns rather than just get worked up and not discuss anything with them. So we hope, we hope we've created a forum for them to express their views and then also created a platform for them to move forward as and if the developer chooses to move forward on developing. So this is not a guarantee by any means, the approval of this by the Plan Commission was not a guarantee that there would be development there. So.
Something that had been pointed out prior to this. Didn't they see any benefit of moving from apartment buildings down to duplexes and homes in terms of?
That, I mean, I think that, and certainly Mayor and Alderperson Lane stepped in. I mean, that point was made several times. I don't know if it was fully understood that the current zoning is R4 and would allow for the development to occur in this area irrespective of the rezoning request or the approval of the rezoning request? And that the effective rezoning request would be a down zone? I don't know at that point. It certainly was made several times, but I don't know if it was fully understood. I'm not sure. I can't exactly speak to that.
Yeah, I think part of the concern, I think there is some confusion as to what it was zoned already. Because people were not understanding that it already can be developed as residential. It's on the comprehensive plan. It's been there. There's nothing new on the comprehensive plan. And I think there was some confusion as to, oh, this is something new and the city wasn't prepared for this request. But actually, it's, the city has always planned for residential development because it's on the comprehensive plan. And people have a lot of concern with water issues right now that are currently not mitigated. And they expressed that very strongly, that they were worried that another development would make, make things worse for them, even though a lot of their water is actually going on to other people's land right now. And, you know, they were concerned just with, they like their neighborhood the way it is. They like to not have other houses around and that's not uncommon. When a new subdivision comes in, everybody just, you know, has some problems with new construction when they have green space around, so.
Have they had any problem with standing water or anything that they could identify?
Running water.
Yeah, and they did express concern about where the water, there are some issues with water not going down in the stormwater areas now, which this development took place many, many years ago. The Nelson Development, so I think Al can speak more to that.
But also a good portion, oh, sorry.
No, no.
Also a good portion of the water drains from their properties onto the former Lipkey property.
Right, and they don't want it all coming back. It's all going to come back somehow, maybe.
I attended the meeting and as I saw it, there were a couple of things. One is, if you look at the platmat right now, it looks like two properties. And I think that there is an assumption almost that two properties meant two buildings. And, you know, whether or not, you know, one being a great big house on nine acres, which is, you know, not common in the city of Milton, and the other one, the six acres basically remaining. So one of the issues, I think, was kind of looking at that as opposed to looking at it and saying, this really could be X number of lots and three of those lots could have apartment houses on them and the rest of it could have single and duplex kinds of properties on it. The water issue sounds like it's an important one. And I think, you know, we're going to have to do diligence as we will in terms of the water to make sure that not a drop of water that's on the old Lipkey property penetrates those other properties. And that's part of what we do to comply with what the DNR has to say. So, you know, I think we can look at it and say to the concerned property owners, it's probably not going to be like you wanted it to be, but there are a couple of benefits. One of the benefits is if we rezone R3, there aren't going to be multiple family dwellings. The biggest that's going to be there is going to be a duplex. I think there's also a little confusion because the word condo got thrown in and I think some people assumed that condo meant more than two. My understanding of R3 is that duplex is as big as you get. So it could be a two, a two-unit condo is what we're talking about. So I think the positive aspects are, the change to R3 says no apartment houses are going to be developed in that area. Another positive really is that the water is going to be probably better than it is right now from the descriptions that were given, at least not worse in that, you know, we're going to be complying with DNR as far as the stormwater is concerned. The third one that was raised in the meeting was parkland. And I think that that will be an issue going forward. And when the developer comes forward with the plan, I think that that's a question that needs to be raised in terms of set aside for parkland for that area.
If not, if not on that property, maybe in the conservancy area behind my house, part of that could be parkland. So we can address that as a city down the road.
You know, it might flood if it's conservancy. On the high end.
I was wondering if that was going to be an issue and would I have to worry? But one thing I will point out, I actually live in a condo duplex. So I know exactly what that zoning would be. People might say, well, you live in duplex, but it is a single condo, yes. So it's not unusual in this part of the state, so.
And the only thing I would caution on is that we cannot control the weather. And we, this development could take place and things could get better. And then all of a sudden, you know, we have two a year of the 100-year rains and everything floods. And that's just kind of the reality that we live in right now. And I don't see that in the future getting better anytime soon. Like flooding is not going to get better in our city.
I would move approval of the rezoning from R4 to R3.
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
Yep. Is that a motion to approve the first reading with second and third and adopt?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay.
It is ordinance 463.
All right. Everybody understand what we're voting on? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. And we're moving on to the controversial library board again. Discussion and possible action regarding an appointment to the library board. Every week they're leaving the library board. It started with Bill and it just hasn't stopped now. So you have a memo. Martin Collins. Sandy Collins. Thank you. I appreciate that. Any discussion, anything?
Second.
And this fulfills or fills that loop that we were in, right Ash? Yeah, thank you.
It's a lifetime appointment from now on. The council has to vote if you're going to leave and run for council. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, our library board is full and we are so happy. Discussion and possible action regarding the Compliance Maintenance Annual Report and Resolution 201917.
Treatment plant stuff again. So this is the annual report that is turned into the DNR. This is a report that the DNR publishes and you have to keep records on all the things in it each month, just about every day. And this accounts for all of the treatment and the quality of the treatment that comes out of the plant. They have an A rating. They have no point violations, which has been pretty much consistent for the last 10 years. So they're doing a really good job down there. And also, you're allowing us to do the improvements to keep up with the requirements too with budgeting and stuff. So we have no violations, no point loss and things we do down there are in the voluntary range for the DNR. But it goes to council so that you're aware of the report and they need an approval resolution from council to send to DNR.
For approval of the resolution to forward the CMAR report to the Department of Natural Resources.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions for Howie?
Just a comment, Howie. Please pass along our thanks to everybody down at the plant there because I know how difficult this is, having worked in a couple different and lived in a couple different areas where we had trouble getting approval of these reports, you know. So I know they work hard to do that and I appreciate it, so.
All those in favor? Opposed? The resolution passes and we'll sign it. Item number 15, review of May financial statements.
There is nothing exciting again. What? There was something exciting?
Teresa said she agreed with you wholeheartedly.
We're five twelfths of the way through the year and that's about where the budget expenditures are, so. You don't want too many exciting things from me over here.
But do you have any questions or clarifications for Dan?
I wanted to say, I was really pleased that our local financial institution was...
I wanted to say, I was really pleased that our local financial institution was willing to adjust the interest rates, and I saw your email recently about earning more interest. It's always a good thing for the city to earn more revenue, so.
He's referring to the fire department.
Yeah. But I mean, that helps everybody.
And we've already hit our budget for interest income for this year.
Oh, the rest is all play money?
No. It was some shrewd placing of some, some two-plus-year CDs, and I caught the curve at the right point in time, so. Eventually it'll probably go down, because the 10-year treasury has fallen one and a quarter point since November.
Find something else to invest in, then.
I can't. It would be illegal under state statutes.
Well, I thought you were submitting some sort of new financial plan to the state.
Let's just buy a bunch of Packer stock.
I think so, I think so.
They aren't selling any right now.
You know what, people would run for city council then, a lot of people would.
Because it's worthless from a financial standpoint.
All right, so, anything else on anything financial? All right, discussion and possible action regarding the scheduling of the next common council meeting.
Talked about this two weeks ago, whether there was an interest in holding the July 2nd meeting or not. At the time, it sounded like from the council's perspective, the preference was to not have it, but we wanted to kind of wait and see if there were items that were, that cropped up that were imminent and in need of approval on July 2nd. And at this time, there is not. So I think if it's the council's desire to cancel that meeting, it's probably pretty safe at this point. Certainly, we can always schedule it if something crazy comes up, but we know the school district stuff will not be coming until August, so that, so they wouldn't, they wouldn't be expecting approvals, and yeah. We don't have any public hearings scheduled, we don't.
So do we need a motion to officially cancel?
Mark says yes.
And then will we post it, or how will people know? Because we don't want people to show up and us not be here.
Facebook.
I mean, we have an agenda to post, so we could post a cancellation with it for this week and just leave it out.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, and we get, I mean, we get a lot of traction on social media, it's, and certainly the courier will let everyone know as well. Mark Mitchell will let everyone know, he knows everybody in this community, so.
He's already, he's already like waiting to hit the sunburn. He's live tweeting.
Should've been here for planning commission.
Really? All right, so, did you make a motion?
No motion.
No motion?
I'll make the motion that we do not have our first council meeting scheduled the week of the 4th of July for 2019. Second.
There's a motion and a second to cancel essentially the July 2nd meeting.
I'm wanting to make sure that we understood that whole week thing.
Okay. All those in favor? Anybody opposed? All right, here we go. Committee reports.
We had another very good meeting with the Janesville Visitor and Convention Bureau. We went over some of the things that we wanted them to highlight for their next, for the next quarter. We talked about things for the fall and the winter. I personally feel like the information that is out there has been very well received, and it's getting out. We had a lot of people, they did a lot of surveying information for Wally Fest and Civil War Living History Days, and I think that this is a very good thing. I don't know if you had any comments, Inga?
Not really, they're working on finalizing a trifold brochure that they're going to be putting in the visitor center by the state line, so that should be printed soon and off to that location.
Other committee reports? Did Parks and Recs get canceled?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a comment on the fire commission meeting taking place tomorrow night, 7:00 PM at the town hall, and one of the items on the agenda is to discuss a variety of staffing proposals and different ideas for the coming year that will be presented by Chief Ernie Rhodes. And, you know, it's going to be a broad presentation, but I think it will be an interesting presentation, and will, nothing will be decided tomorrow night, but it will be a nice chance to give us an idea of what ideas are out there, and will, I think it will give the city of Milton and the township of Milton a chance to kind of sit back and force us to decide, what do we want to see? And, you know, if anybody from the public has ideas after it's told about in the paper, maybe they will come forth and tell us what kinds of things they would like to see as well.
Just quick, in terms of Historic Preservation Commission, we have, our regular scheduled meeting would be July 3rd, but I'll probably be rescheduling that to July 10th the following week, so, just an FYI.
Are we done with committee reports? Okay, Chief, you wanna go for staff reports?
I don't have much. Officer Heather Peck has achieved her probationary, or past probation, I don't know how I wanna phrase it, but she's now a full member of the police department, and glad to have her. She's done great in her training, and pleased that she's going to be with us, so, I think that's all I got.
Ashley?
We had a great first week of our summer reading program last week. Library visits were up from last year, the same week, and in fact, we're kind of on track to be busier than last year, and our circulation is up about 3,000 compared to this time last year, so, we're very busy. Jamie had a great Melton Mayhem Bike Scavenger Hunt on Saturday, about 65 participants, and then Chief Mark Court is doing Storytime tomorrow at 10:30.
Oh, you did not include that in your report!
It wasn't my update today.
Gonna do it with an Irish brogue.
Al?
As I kind of mentioned, just casually, the school district, we met with our, we had a phone conversation with PRA last week. I met with some school district staff today, and then we have a larger meeting on Thursday to talk about the referendum improvements and establishing the timeline. The Milton East project in particular is going to be complicated, but it's not, it's not anything that's insurmountable, but it will require conveyance of land, frankly, from the city to the school district in what format that takes. Each one requires a conditional use permit, which extends the process a little bit longer, but, yeah, East.
How much land do they want?
I don't, I don't know that, I don't know the square footage or acreage or anything like that, but, you know, but they'll need that in order to build.
Yeah, but they kind of knew, they've known for a while, the school district.
Oh, yes, they have. I mean, they knew that even when Jerry talked about it at one time, from the original plan, that, and we did take some as part of that original playground extension, so it's been kind of eaten away over time.
Yeah, it was talked about extensively back in 2015, when the Milton East parking lot project was.
Yes.
That, that currently, if you go out there right now, they have crossed city land and have been on city land for a long time.
Yeah.
The difference in this case is they're going to build a building across city land.
Yes.
So, yeah, so that, it just, it just adds another step to the process, and hopefully we can, hopefully we can meet their timeline, but it's gonna come down to, you know, getting information back from them and how this, however the school board proceeds, so. The other item, for folks who were at the planning commission meeting and folks who weren't at the planning commission meeting, it was a, it was, there was a lengthy discussion, and, you know, folks are understandably interested, concerned, this is their backyard, and it's a situation in which, you know, I, it's sad to say, I've been doing this a long time and certainly seen these situations come up often, and it is difficulty, but the reason that those public hearings exist, you know, and maybe, maybe the folks who were here tonight didn't feel that was the case, is to share that information with the planning commission, so when the day comes that a subdivision plot is brought forward, there is an understanding of some of the concerns that the neighborhood has. And Howie mentioned it during that meeting, it's also very important for the developer to hear those comments, so the developer understands the pressures that we as the city are under, and the council is under, and the planning commission is under when making those approvals, and they can start to develop hopefully a relationship with their surrounding neighbors that where they understand that, hey, I was at that planning commission meeting, and I've heard the neighbors speak about concerns about the tree line, concerns about stormwater, you know, one of the things I may want to do is not touch that tree line on the back of the properties that, above the homes on Nelson Avenue. So that's the purpose of those public hearings. It may seem, it may seem frustrating, it may seem pointless, but it is not. It's not, absolutely, and I think of a situation that just occurred up in Red Hawk Farms, where we had properties that had been in existence for a very long time, that had a stormwater issue in their backyard, and through that subdivision plot process, we were able to work with the new developer who had no responsibility whatsoever to these adjoining property owners. We, that, the new developer said, yeah, I can work with them to help mitigate this existing stormwater problem. And that's, you know, had folks not talked, and folks not found a way to get along, that issue probably would have just continued to exist. So those are the types of opportunities that do exist, as frustrating as they may seem, and as fleeting as they may seem, and as ineffective or inefficient as they may seem when you're out there and you're trying to understand this process, that is the reason that those opportunities do exist. So, you know, and the comprehensive plan was adopted in 2015, before that it was adopted in 2008, and that plan has showed that to be developed with residential development. I think there's plans that date back to the 60s that show that being planned for residential development, so, but I understand it's frustrating. And, you know, the only editorial comment I would make is, no, this was not a curveball to the city. No, this was not something that caught us by surprise, and no, this is not a grab for tax dollars. You know, Matt Bonson was the fourth person to contact me about this potential development. So that was the only one that I thought was a little, in my opinion, out of line. But, yeah, but, I mean, hopefully those concerns were heard by the property owners, hopefully those concerns were heard by the developers, if not, we could reiterate it again at the time that the subdivision plot comes forward, and that is the process. And although it may be frustrating, it's, it's one that we have to respect his rights to. He is a property owner in the city of Milton as well, and yes, he does own the property, and he has rights as well, so.
Dan, anything?
July 16th, our auditors will be here to present the 2018 financial statements, so that'll be the first thing on that agenda.
Howie?
Red Hawk Farms started the street work, the gravel work on their street up there on the new addition, and the Little League tournament, from what I heard, went really well this weekend.
I lived pretty far away, too, I mean, a lot of you know where I live, that was, I mean, they were like at Sunday morning, it was like, ah! It was really, really, really cool. I hope we're able to do that more often, it was fun. I don't know if it was fun if you lived on Cresson, but it was really cool where I lived, I don't know.
But we didn't accede any noise complaints, did we?
No, no, man, those little dudes were at it bright and early.
Was that an MREC tournament, or?
Kind of a combination, but mostly MREC, mostly the one Milton, I think it's, the Storm is the name of the one, and the Mad Dogs is the name of the other group, and then they had 8 and under, and I think they had 6 teams for that, and they had 12 and under, I think they had 8 or 10 teams for that, so it was Saturday and Sunday, so.
I did drive by at one point on Sunday, and the parking lot, the new parking lot at Lamar was full.
Oh, that's nice.
It was being used.
Anything else, Howie? Okay, who's in charge of team building tonight?
We haven't been in meetings all afternoon. It's a good one. Before we do that, though, can I make an announcement?
No.
No. No.
Are you still recording?
Congratulations, Linda.
God has done it for me, yay! No, this is an announcement for the Optimist Club, they wanted me to let everyone know that the Independence Day run walk on July 4th is at the Milton High School lobby, registration is from 7:00 to 8:15 AM, fees are $10 to $25, depending on the adult or child, or t-shirt or no t-shirt, and there are three start times, 8:25, 8:30, and 8:35.
Can you pre-register?
You can pre-register till June 28th.
Upside, or how do you pre-register?
There's, there's forms on the counter out here.
Are there forms at the library, too? There's forms everywhere.
Well, I guess quick if we're talking about the 4th of July.
Okay.
There's also the Little Lions Bike Parade on July 3rd at 6 o'clock at Schulbrook Park, so have your kids come up and decorate their bikes and ride around the path, it's fun. And then the parade's at 1 o'clock. Madison Avenue is going to be shut down at noon, correct Scott and Howie? I, at noon, so just make sure that if you're having parties on Madison Avenue, everyone is at that location by noon, because people are not going to be able to drive down Madison Avenue past noon.
Or be in golf carts or horses.
Oh, come on! Nothing! So put that in the courier, at noon. Anything else for the 4th of July announcements?
Sunday is the 5th anniversary for the Lions?
Yes, the Lion Club, Lions Club are celebrating our five-year anniversary on Sunday with a picnic at South Goodrich Park. Hopefully, it will not be thunderstorming.
Anything else for anybody?
General items.
Hey, good job, oh, we still have team building.
Okay, this is a real easy one. I'm thinking summer, family reunions, I know that we've been through the baseball thing and the Cubs and the Brewers and all of the sports teams, but my question is, for your family reunion, that great big reunion that you have in your mind that you'll always remember, what was your favorite dish? And who cooked it?
We don't have family reunions, we only show up to weddings and funerals.
I've never seen this one before.
Aunt Maryella's pickled watermelon rind.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, that's just great.
Can you bring that to a council meeting, please?
I'll try.
It'd be a family reunion, common council meeting.
Strawberry rhubarb pie.
Mine is strawberry pie. My mother.
My mother and my grandmothers, both, yeah, both.
Assuming that the family reunion is taking place in the summertime, I, everything that my grandma Arlene made was off the charts amazing, but I would. Assuming that the family reunion is taking place in the summertime. I, everything that my grandma Arlene made was off the charts amazing, but I will say that my mom's, my actual biological mom's potato salad is awesome.
I'm going to go with my Uncle Jim's famous buttermilk pancakes, which my husband contends is just the recipe on the side of the buttermilk container. But they're special because they're Uncle Jim's, so.
I'm gonna go with Ethel's baked beans.
Grandma Conco used to make those toasted oyster crackers with the seasoning on top. Those are amazing.
Okay, my grandma used to make apple dumplings, apple dumplings, by hand, enough for the whole family.
You are not continuing that tradition?
Absolutely not.
Our next team building is naming Linda's food!
I missed something, apparently. No, I'm pretty sure before the next council meeting, we'll have Sibick here to give us sensitivity training.
And Linda's husband!
Moving along. I'm gonna say Grandma's Norwegian Rumagroat. It's a Norwegian pudding. Flour, milk, sugar, cinnamon sugar, butter, I mean, it's, yeah, it's, yeah.
That's thick.
Pretty good.
Off to...
Jerry.
Jerry, the audience, and the 302 over there.
I'll just, I'll just say my aunt bakes really good, so anything she makes, I don't know.
Mark or the courier, don't speak all at once. Or Mark or didn't. Can you please take a picture so we can see it next time? Mark, Mark and Dan? Howie, you have to share! Dan?
Well, my family, we've never done a family reunion, there's only nine of us, I couldn't tell you the last time we were all in the same room. But the family I married into, Cindy makes a really good key lime pie.
Oh, nice. No!
Well, my recollection, I'm usually, usually hanging around a beer cooler, so I'd...
Is that all of us? Oh, by the way, I do have an announcement to make. So the University of Wisconsin is doing a study, is part of a study, that they're looking for, and it's going to be a million volunteers across the United States. They're looking for at least 35,000 from the state of Wisconsin to participate in a health study where you can get your blood taken and other tests done to help be part of a nationwide study to produce better pharmaceutical drugs and treat diseases, so I would encourage all of you to participate. Teresa's mortified. They can even do a little bit, they'll do a little bit of genetic testing and tell you what your risk factors are, and you can get $25 just for participating, so I would encourage you guys to do that. Most of us don't even want to know how bad our health is, but it's for a greater cause. So I think with that, we will see you all after the 4th of July, I hope you all have a great 4th of July. And is there a motion to adjourn?
What kind of car are you going to be riding in?
I hope I still get the big diesel truck that I had last year, if my daughter will let me use her diesel truck. So, I don't know, I'll take a sports car too, I think I know a couple people with sports cars.
Dick Cry.
Dick Cry, that's right. Dick Cry owes me for all the speeches I make. So is there a motion to adjourn Jerry?
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor? Opposed? See you in July, see you at the parade.